Okay, I'll call this regular meeting of the city council to order this Tuesday, September the 26th at 6:00 PM. Please make sure that your cellphones are off or if you have a catchy ring tune, you can leave it on. We will begin tonight with the invocation which I will offer and then followed by the pledge of allegiance by Chief Smith. You may stand if you wish. Father, we're so thankful for this occasion to be able to come together as one, Lord, and deliberate, Lord, and contemplate the proceedings of this community. We thank you, Lord, that we are privileged to live in such a beautiful and a wonderful area. We thank you, Lord, as we see the tragedies that are happening, Lord, not only in our state but around this world, that we live in a place where we have been relatively untouched. We thank you for the volunteers that have helped, Lord, in our area, those that were less fortunate. And we ask always, Father, that you would light our path and guide us, Lord. You said when we lack wisdom, we should ask it of God. And together, Lord, we ask you for that this evening because so many lives depend on what we do. We ask that you would watch over these proceedings and we ask it all in the name of Christ Jesus our Lord. Amen.
Will you join me in the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Item number one is announcements of community interest. Mr. Cunius.
Thank you, Mayor White. Before I start, I gotta keep it short tonight because I know we have a long agenda, but the mayor asked me to bring this to everybody's attention. This young man is named DeMarcus Luna. He's a six-year-old and recently he was diagnosed with leukemia. And we're gonna have a blood drive for him here in the City Hall parking lot and that's 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM on Friday, October 13th. So anybody can come by and help this young man out, we sure would appreciate it. All right. Before I get to something new, I want to take a quick remark about the Kerrville Triathlon Festival. The seventh annual one was held over the weekend and it drew over 1,400 competitors to town. More than 80 percent of them came from out of town. The event's host hotel, where the end of the hills, sold out last June and other businesses were also positively impacted. You guys are gonna have to start bringing popcorn from now on because we're doing movies. I talked briefly with one of the festival's co-founders this morning, Dan Carroll, who I always refer to by our very own Pat Pitello over here. And Mr. Carroll said that his company, High Five Events, puts these triathlons on all over the state of Texas. And he said his staff's favorite location is Kerrville. So that was great to hear. And so on behalf of the city, when I was out there the other day, everybody was having a great time. I didn't see anything but smiles. What I want to say on behalf of the city is a big, big thank you to all the competitors, to all our sponsors, especially to all our volunteers and to our police and fire departments for helping us put on another great event. Okay, and next, I want to give a shout-out to the mayor's youth advisory council. They held their first meeting last week. It's a great photo of these kids. This council is led by Mayor White and includes 15 young men and women from our area high schools and home schools who've shown an interest in seeing how government works. I don't know if we have any of them here tonight. I don't see any, but they're gonna be participating in various volunteer opportunities around Kerrville as the school year progresses. And I encourage you to meet them when you have a chance because once you do and you see their enthusiasm and their willingness to get involved in the city, you're gonna feel a lot of hope and confidence about our future politicians.
Leaders.
Thank you very much. Future leaders, yes. One of them is gonna be Governor of Texas, Roman, so you need to...
That's what it says.
I don't think it stops there. I don't think that's the cap for that.
Yeah, he might be president. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more announcements by council? Mike Whitler, could you quickly jump up there and tell us what your crew did for the victims in Florida? I just think that's very notable and commendable. Mike Whitler of K-Pub.
Yes, I'm the general manager for Kerrville Public Utility Board, where your communities are the community-owned electric utility here. We sent crews to Florida and they worked in three communities in Florida to restore power. The first was New Smyrna Beach and then they moved to a smaller town called Bartow, which is halfway between Orlando and Tampa. And then finally, they finished in Lakeland, which was next door to Bartow. They returned Friday and they were out there for 13 days.
Wow. In the swamps, in the heat.
It's all done in coordination with the American Public Power Association and they coordinate mutual aid efforts on behalf of over 2,000 communities across the U.S. So the American Public Power Association mobilized over 1,000 linemen for this effort. So it was very, very nice to participate in it and it also brings a lot of experience back to our community. I hope we never have to deal with anything close to that, but we have people here now that have seen the response you have to muster for that type of an event.
Yes, let's give them applause. Any other announcements by council? Okay, if not, we'll move to item number two, which is the Visitors and Citizens Forum. Any citizen with business not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the city council. Prior to speaking, each speaker must fill out the speaker request form and give it to the city secretary. City council may not discuss or take any action on an item, but may place the issue on a future agenda. The number of speakers will be limited to the first 10 and each speaker is limited to four minutes. Please pay attention to the citizen participation notice on your marker there. And I have one.
Bruce Strachey, 821 Earl Garrett. As those of you who know me might imagine, in the last two weeks, I've gotten a lot of calls to come back and bring something positive to the Visitors Forum. And as much as I love doing that at the end of the meeting, to end on a high note, hopefully tonight, a positive thing will help us go through the difficult challenges that face us and we can all move forward in the future. And the positive thing is that there is a tremendous amount of investment going on in Kerrville right now. I can tell you in the last few months that two of our prime buildings downtown have sold to new folks who are bringing new ideas downtown. In addition to that, we have not only a new coffee shop, but a new wine bar and draft bar downtown that's very successful. Last Friday night, I sat out at a table under the stars on the pavement and enjoyed a wonderful evening out there. And somebody did try to park in the spot while I was there, but the folks at Paco's, they all stood up and said they were with the guy in the chair, so I was okay. And it's just, we have so much wonderful stuff going on here. And I'm just talking about downtown and it's not just downtown. Kerrville is the best place in the hill country to live. That's not only from past councils, but this council, you are all leading us forward. And I just want to encourage you to let you know that the citizens of this community are behind a strong and successful, growing Kerrville, a sensibly growing Kerrville. And we're seeing that because they're pulling their wallets out and they're investing in downtown Kerrville. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have another one. I'm gonna stray a little bit from the protocol here and I'm gonna allow Dr. Richard Norat to just introduce himself because he may have to leave. He's a candidate which we'll consider later on. We're not gonna have discussion, he's not gonna go over his application. He just wanted you to see his face and know who he is for our discussion later on.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Dick Norat, Richard Norat, and I've placed my name and nomination as consideration for a member as a city council representative for a member of the Kerrville appraisal district. I live at 119 Grand Bluff Ridge up in the Heights and the wife and I have lived here for about two and a half years now. And just like that gentleman before me said, this is one of the greatest places. Having served in the military and the Coast Guard for 20 years, we love it here. So thank you very much and I'll try to be back later. My commander in chief ordered me to go to this thing here and I'll be gone for about an hour.
We know who she is. Thank you so much. Items...oh, any others? But that's all that I had up here. Item number 3A and 3B are some presentations and recognitions. I'm going to read them from the floor and I'm going to ask for Sandra and Amy and whatever staff that you have here and for Mr. McDaniel to join us for these presentations. By the way, I watched the meeting last and I couldn't hear you because you didn't have this thing. I didn't know what you were saying, but I knew it was all good. It was for our 40-year award for Dale. So appreciate that. Item number 3A is the presentation of certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for fiscal year 2016. The city of Kerrville is pleased to announce that the Finance Department has received the Government Finance Officer Association of the United States and Canada's certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for fiscal year 2016 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. The city has received this award for 33 continuous years, beginning with fiscal year 1984. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in government accounting and financial reporting and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment. So we have those that are responsible for that. And I'll ask Mr. McDaniel to read what's on the award.
So the award is certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting presented to city of Kerrville, Texas. But it's not just the city of Kerrville, Texas. And by the way, this is another reason why Kerrville's such a great place to live. We have a very small finance shop, but they are very talented, very dedicated, and they really work hard. This, here, just since I've been here the last five months, it's been wrapping up audit, it's been new budget, it's been conversion of software, and these folks have tackled it all. So Sandra, thank you so much. Here 33 years now with this and that really speaks very highly of you and your team. And so thank you so much for the hard work.
Thank you. I could say you all could stay standing, but that's okay. Because item number 3B is the same group. You know, the 84th legislature really brought forth a recommendation and a demand for transparency in financial accounting for municipal and state and county governments. And in that vein, there were some laws passed that required it, but I am happy to say that the Transparency Stars Award Certificate goes above and beyond what is required by law. In the areas of traditional finances, it has been awarded this year to the city of Kerrville by Glenn Heager, Comptroller, Texas Comptroller of Public Accounts, for exemplary efforts, that's above and beyond, in creating financial transparency around public services and spending decisions. The Transparency Stars Program recognizes local government across Texas that are striving to meet a high standard for financial transparency online. These efforts provide citizens with clear, consistent information about public expenditures in user-friendly formats. So with that, I will let Mr. McDaniel read this award.
Thank you, Mayor. So this says, "The Texas Comptroller of Public Accounts awards the city of Kerrville the Traditional Finances Star for exemplary efforts in creating financial transparency around public services and spending decisions. The Transparency Stars Program recognizes local governments across Texas that are striving to meet a high standard for financial transparency online. These efforts also provide citizens with clear, consistent information about public spending in user-friendly formats." So congratulations, Sandra, to your team. And I also want to say, it goes way beyond financial. We're really broadcasting more city council meetings than ever before, putting more information as far as schedules of projects and their status of those projects online. We're doing more to communicate with our residents through our partners in the newspaper. So we're not stopping there. So we really feel like it's your city and that the more you know, the better city that we'll end up with. So my three Es, one of them is engagement with our citizens and this is all about that. So congratulations to you and our IT department and certainly our public information officer.
Thank you, ladies. And Mr. McDaniel, thank you for leading us in that effort as well. So you can look online and see what all that he's speaking about at your leisure. I think you'll be pleased with the amount of information that you can find about us online. Items number 4B-A through 4F are listed on the consent agenda. Does any member of council wish to have any of these items removed? Any member of the audience? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Of motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. Item number 5A is ordinance number 2017-17, adopting the annual budget for the city of Kerrville, Texas, fiscal year 2018, providing appropriations for each city department and fund containing a cumulative clause and containing a savings and severability clause. This is the second reading of this budget ordinance. Mr. McDaniel wanting to address us?
Yes, Mayor and council. So at your last meeting, as requested, I brought back some options for you to consider in amending the budget. We had what I would call three housekeeping items that were adds and deletes, which amounted to 47,500. And then there was also a request to look at what it would take to get to the effective rate. And again, you were presenting some options. Since then, you all individually have discussed with me a number of other options, but tonight, the only option that I'm really presenting as far as to balance the budget at this point with the housekeeping items is the last page in your packet under this item, which is attachment A. And so it would be to increase the sales tax projection to 3.97 percent, which is very similar to what we actually had in the proposed budget. It's just that the last two months have come in stronger than anticipated, so the number's actually less than 4 percent now, but it would take it up to 3.9 percent would be the 47,500. And then you see the adjustments there for the Kerrville Sports Complex, the library fee revenue, and the reduced transfer to asset replacement because of a discount that we're getting on a purchase that's on your agenda today. So that would amend the overall proposed budget from 66,306,531 to 66,354,031. And with that, Mayor and council, I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have.
All right. Any questions or comments from council?
I got one question. On the page with the budget listed, there biz number 14 golf, it's got an asterisk by it and I can't figure out what the asterisk means. That mean I get to claim two putts on every hole and move on?
Sure. I'm sorry, what page was that, council member?
It's right after the budget.
Yeah, it's right after the summary. It's on page one, I guess, of the live stuff.
We missed that one in the taking back.
Okay, so this was, this page was copied right out of your budget document and those asterisks were used for something else?
Okay.
So that one asterisk was missed and I would just...
Okay, mighty fine.
Say disregard that, but good eye. Thank you.
That's sufficient for me on that.
Okay, any other comments or questions? We had some material at our chairs when we arrived this evening. I was able to watch the meeting and I appreciate your understanding. When I was out with a back injury last meeting, it was fairly exciting, but I did watch all of it in detail. And so I feel like I'm real familiar with the comments that were made. We did have some information at our dice. Is there any comment that you wanted to make? I believe you brought it to us, Mr. Brody.
Yes, it was basically, and you know, I'm sorry for the late put-down of the papers, but I felt like I was still gonna make the discussion and I just felt like the paper was gonna be more helpful to the discussion. And so if I'm allowed to, I'd like to present it as a PowerPoint as well and discuss what it is I'm laying out. It's essentially amendments in addition to the housekeeping amendments that Mr. McDaniel has presented. It's further amendments that would allow us to get to the effective tax rate. So if I could, could I present that?
Is there any objection from council? I think it would help us and maybe the audience to understand what you're talking about. We have it in front of us, but they don't.
Right.
So I'm good with that. This is a once-a-year thing and I think we ought to all be able to wrap our heads around what's going on.
Okay, so real quickly, it gets a little complicated, but it doesn't have to. So the goal is basically just trying to get, you know, keep that same forward-looking approach to the budget, but also fully fund all the short-term and long-term program presented by the city manager and provide a little tax relief to the citizens wherever possible. So those are the goals. Basically, the adjustments that I would be proposing is, on the revenue side, you see the red ones. Those are the ones that were actually proposed by Mr. McDaniel. And the other ones that you have on there, the top one A is just pointing out the difference that we're talking, the revenue change to the budget, if we were to go to the effective rate, would be that. And then you have the Kerr County resident library fee, which we are not expecting to collect, so there's a revenue change there. Raising the sales tax revenue projection. In my projection here, we actually don't raise it, it's a slight number, but it's actually 5,000 less than what Mr. McDaniel presented. And then the last two, you have transfer a portion of the projected FY17 budget surplus into the pay-as-you-go capital fund. So the idea there is, we have pretty solid projection of what FY17 is gonna have in reserves, above and beyond our cash flow target of 25 percent. And we have a number that we've been given, which I'm guessing is gonna be even slightly higher, but it's shown as 240,000 and some change. So the idea here is to transfer a portion of that to a capital fund and then pay one-time fees in the FY18 budget out of those capital funds. So we're, I'm suggesting a revenue increase, if you will, of 143,000. And then the one-time expenses that went through the budget looking for in FY18 were two of them in particular, and you could use any one that you could find, but basically these two that I chose, one is in the sports complex, machinery tools and equipment, there's some one-time purchases being made there as they start up the complex, and that was 68,000. And then general operations that transfer is related to the comp plan that we are in our proposed budget, paying out of the general fund 75,000. So the idea would be to shift that into this. So the net change on the revenue of the overall budget would be 4,500 dollars. We essentially have increased revenue by 4,500 dollars in the budget, if I do that. The expense adjustments to keep the balanced budget, again, the red ones are already gonna happen. These are housecleaning. The additional water service, that's 60,000 that we're gonna increase the expense. The life pack savings is gonna reduce the expense. And then the third one is part of a discussion, but the KEDC contribution from the city still fully funds KEDC with all of their expenses that they are requesting, but there's a 21,000 net change on that. And so the expense side would be increased by 4,500, which again is the same as the revenue side. So you keep your balanced budget, you produce these, and so what do you have? All right, so moving along quickly. To summarize, the general fund cash reserves will remain above the mandated 25 percent target of projected expense budget for FY17 and 18. Again, these are projections, but nothing that's being suggested by me in an amendment here changes that. So it also, doing this as I am proposing, does not directly cause services to be eliminated or reduced either in FY18 or any future fiscal year. That does not mean that future council won't reduce services in a future year. It just means that this budget amendment will not cause services to be reduced or eliminated. It does not cause any capital projects to be eliminated or reduced in FY18 or future either. The fire truck purchase that was in question last meeting still remains fully funded. It's not affected by these amendments as well. It does not contemplate or cause any positions to be eliminated or reduced either in FY18 or future. Does not mean that future councils won't change something, but this, these amendments will not cause that to happen. It will not cause personnel salaries or benefits to be eliminated or reduced, so nobody's salary is being affected by this amendment. All requested expenditures that will remain fully funded for FY18 as well as any future years, I mean, it does not cause any to be removed. And it provides some tax relief for citizens without negatively impacting the services now or in the future. And then as far as support for the idea of going after the effective tax rate, which again, I'm not sure if everybody understands what the effective tax rate is, but it's essentially the tax rate that you would apply to keep spending levels the same from last year to this year. Collect the same amount of revenue as you collected last year. City of Ingram reduced their property tax rate. I don't believe they went to the effective rate, but they actually did reduce it. UGRA adopted their effective tax rate. Kerr County Commissioners Court, I guess, is reconsidering, or reconsidered raising their, they were considering raising their property tax and chose not to raise it. So, and then Kerrville Daily Times actually stated in a kudos, toast, I guess, column, in reference to City of Ingram reducing its tax rate, says, "All officials should look to eliminate costs on taxpayers whenever possible, given rising appraisals." So it's kind of implicit support for at least attempting something. Supported by unanimously approved Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Resolution, which is stating, "It recommends the aforementioned city budget formulated and based on the current effective tax rate be adopted by the city of Kerrville." And I believe they're gonna read that into the record at some point tonight. So that's pretty much the gist of it. And, you know, as I said, it just seemed easier to have it presented up there while I was discussing it rather than just talk about numbers. But basically, I mean, that would be my presentation or my...
Your recommendation.
Recommendation, yes.
Okay. May I do this then, Mr. Brody? Thank you for going through that and there may be some questions. I know that Mr. Ferguson had some questions and so go ahead for Mr. Brody about this, these numbers.
Yes. George, would you please put up slide four?
If it didn't fall off, did it fall off by me going? Okay.
The two summary slides, four and five.
Okay, four, I think, is that one, right? Or no?
The next one.
It's the sum, it's the first summary.
There it is.
Whoa, there it is.
Well, that's the first summary right there.
Yeah.
That's what he wants.
Thank you. In interest of honesty and transparency, I would tell you that no one here knows what's gonna happen in FY18 and all future years. And no one here can guarantee that. And I think that you need to take a look at the numbers and deal with the budget. That's fine. But don't believe that you're getting into something that's never, ever gonna change going down the road because that is just not gonna happen. I can promise you, things will happen that we don't know about today and they'll happen tomorrow. And they're gonna happen in these out years, what are generally referred to as out years. So take that in mind and no services are intended to be reduced, but it could happen if something else happens that we don't know, that's not included in the details that are there. The same is true relative to the third item here, no capital projects. Well, you know, we may have to accelerate or we may have to slow down, but it's quite liable to change. The fire truck is obviously not part of my comments. If you'd go to the fifth slide, George, please?
Yes, yep.
Thanks. No positions eliminated or reduced in either FY18 or any future fiscal year. Well, I'm here to tell you, homeowners and taxpayers, business people alike, things happen that you don't know what's gonna happen. And the personal salaries and benefits are not gonna be eliminated or reduced. gonna be eliminated or reduced in any future fiscal year. Again, we don't know about that. And so, I think you'd be making a bad mistake to act on this in a way, we may all choose to act and approve the numbers in these first three slides, because they're not terribly different than what the city manager has. But I would warn you that these things can happen. I've lived at least as long as 99% of the people in here and maybe longer, and I've just know that things happen that we don't anticipate. And I bet we could all get out our pens and pencils tonight and write down what we think's gonna happen, and I'll bet you 50 cents that something's gonna happen different than that in the next month or two. So, I'm really alarmed about the idea of presenting these slides with saying that these things are gonna have no future impact. I just don't believe that's true, and I think you ought to put that in your thinking as we should when we go about adopting this budget. Thank you.
Yes, sir, and I appreciate the comments.
I have a question. George, on the expense adjustments page, the last one, it says the KEDC contribution will be reduced from $24,500 down to 3,000. I need you to explain to me how that will not upset their budget.
Basically, they presented, KEDC presented a budget requesting expenses for 253,500. And they will be fully funded if they receive X number of dollars from their funding sources this year and utilize what has been classified as unused funds in their current bank, I guess you'd say.
So, they'll draw down their reserves.
Correct. Which is, I mean, that's basically where...
Which is the same conversation we had last week.
Right. And so, that's, I mean, that's not a claim of fact, that's a part of our discussion that we would have. I mean, you know what I'm saying? I mean, that reduction there is something that we'd be discussing like right here.
Exactly.
And y'all did it last time, you're right. Was that, did that answer the...
And we talked a little bit about that then.
Okay.
And if I might, just to clarify, just real briefly, Mr. Ferguson's points are quite valid. It's simply to say that in each one of those things, these budget amendments are not going to affect any of those things by doing them. If we don't do them or we do these amendments, those dangers of future are going to exist. So, yes, this is not actually forcing those, you know, pressuring those any more than they are now.
Pardon me, but I don't believe that.
Okay.
You don't know what's gonna happen. Simply, you do not know, and it could be, I grant you that most of them won't happen.
I think if we could get to the basis, we won't have this all night, but I think basically, I understand your point. Well-taken, Mr. Ferguson, and I think that, George, it could've been a little easier to just cut it off and just say, "It won't affect this, it won't affect that, and it won't affect this." And I think that's an accurate statement. I think the reason you did what you did is because in Mr. McDaniel's proposals to us at the last meeting, he did carry it out for a five-year scenario using those numbers, and he did estimate some expenses and things ongoing. So, I think that's what you did. You just took that same protocol and went forward. But I think in fairness, Mr. Ferguson, I wouldn't worry about that part. I think the most important thing he's saying is that these few amendments that he mentioned today, in addition to what Mr. McDaniel offered, will have no effect on any of the things that he mentioned tonight. So, any more questions for Mr. Rudy by council? If not, I have a few members of the public who would like to speak. And by the way, if I might just preface this with saying that if it was a normal second reading and nothing had changed, we would go right on without public comment, but because there are some changes proposed both by staff and council, you're welcome to.
Great. That's good to know. Thank you, councilmember and mayor. I wanted to say that I personally think that the proposed budget, proposed tax rate in the budget should be approved for several reasons. First of all, we just saw the city staff got an award, and I believe that they deserved it, and so therefore, I think that their planning and the preparation for the budget is one we should all endorse. So, I think the tax rate that's in there covers some of the things that we are concerned about as we grow. As Bruce pointed out, we have growth coming to Kerrville, so we need to plan, and we need to have the funds to do so. So, I know that you've had workshops, and you've had meetings, you've had behind-the-scenes meetings, we've had councilmember meetings. We've talked and deliberated and studied and considered all that we had, and I think that what the city came up with was what I would put my money on, because I think they took all of that time to prepare for it. So, I think the little savings that we would gain with the effective rate does not give me confidence that we can adequately fund the services that we need to in the city to grow. So, that's my personal opinion, and I appreciate what you're trying to do, George, as far as savings, but I think it's, and Mike, to coin a phrase, I think it's a penny wise and a pound foolish when we're looking where we're gonna need these funds, just like Mr. Ferguson said, things we don't even know that we're gonna need money for. So, the other thing I'd like to speak to is the KEDC. I was on the EIC board for two years, and I really would say that they were instrumental in retaining the Avery Company, the Mooney, and as well as Fox Tank, which was a new addition. So, I think regardless of who is at the helm, and I think Brian O'Connor deserves the rest of this year to follow through with some of his plans that he spent so much time putting together. I had the pleasure of meeting with him about a week ago, and he shared with me some of the tools that he's preparing right now to carry forward, and I would love to see those happen. So, that's my opinion, and I hope you'll consider it, and thank you very much.
Delane, can this be for 5A and B then, since you touched on both?
Oh, okay, the...
You did on the, so...
I did.
We're on 5A, that's the budget, but it is associated, so if you want me to call you back, that's all I'm saying on 5D.
Let me think about it.
Okay, okay. I'll leave it right here. Ms. McMahon, is it McMahon?
Is it McMahon?
McMahon. That's what I thought. They said it wrong the other day at UGRA.
Madam Mayor and councilpeople, persons, thank you for entertaining what I'm, or considering what I have to say today. I'm the chair of the Kerrville Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. We had a special meeting last week, and I come this evening with a letter and a resolution that the board agreed on. The essence of time, since there are two of them, I won't read them fully, and I'll ask Mr. McDaniel if he would pass them to council. The resolution passed was basically in support of following the use of the effective tax rate, and I'll just read that one part of the resolution. Whereas there has been a budget prepared by the staff of the City of Kerrville and presented to the city council that provides funds necessary for the maintenance and operation of the parks and recreation facilities located in and operated by the City of Kerrville, and said funding is contingent on maintaining the effective property rate without any increase in said effective rate. Therefore, it's resolved that the board recommends the aforementioned city budget formulated on that basis be considered. That's all I really have on that one. The other is a letter that also comes from our board pertaining to the Olympic swimming Kerrville has a wonderful resource in our parks and recreational facilities due in part to the forward-thinking decisions made in the past. I doubt that there are any cities of our size that can be compared favorably to what we offer our citizens, and of course, we've got the wonderful softball, baseball, and soccer field complex well underway. There are numerous swimming pools in the hill country, but as far as I know, there is only one Olympic-sized pool, and that is our pool located in the Singing Wind Park. Having been built some years ago, the pool is showing its age. It needs repairs and updating, although the specific needs and desirable changes cannot be determined without a professional assessment. The letter from the Parks and Recreation Board, Advisory Board, I can read to you, it's brief, but I think this feasibility has been brought up on table before, and so this is just our plea that maybe you reconsider it. On behalf of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, I would like to confirm the board's interest in continuing with the feasibility study process for the Olympic Pool in Singing Wind Park. The board unanimously voted a special meeting held on September 21st this year to support the continuation of this quality-of-life project by making a recommendation to the city council to consider authorizing the feasibility study process. The Olympic Pool was built in 1970 and has not seen significant improvement since. The facility is outdated and could be evaluated for basic needs as well as feature recommendations based on current aquatic trends such as slides, interactive toys, and include input from the community and local stakeholders. Shroner University and Kerrville Independent School District, both have expressed interest and support of this project as well, thus resulting in a potential asset for both. The feasibility study could provide improved options for a year-round competitive pool, recreational improvements, or combination of both. Improvements to this facility would continue to enhance the quality of life for our citizens and community, and that's really all I have on that letter. I wonder if the pool could even be part of the triathlon in the future. I'm down, out of town. One last thing real quick, it stretches to the budget. I saw the total eclipse in Kearney, Nebraska. I went to our visitors' center to say, "We need to get on this for Kerrville," and they said they already are. 2024, it's gonna be a bonanza for Kerrville. Thank you.
May I ask the speaker a question?
Yes, Diane, if you would remain...
Diane, I just wanna be double sure...
At the podium, please.
About the last paragraph of the resolution, it says, "Based on the current effective tax rate." So, that means the Parks Board is urging us to cut the tax rate.
That's correct.
And go back to the effective tax rate rather than the current tax rate that we have had for nine years.
That's what it says in the next slide paragraph.
That's what it says, yeah.
And that's what they meant. I just mean, sometimes, effective tax rate, current tax rate, these things, and normally, those are the different. Current tax rate means the one we've had for all these nine years. Effective tax rate is a little lower. So, I just wondered which one the board means to support.
The one that enables adequate revenue for operations of the park.
Okay. And if I could, good question, Ms. Summerlin, and I know that Diane sits on UGRA, and they just went with the effective tax rate, so I know she knows what she's talking about there. So, I would like to say, if there's no more questions for the speaker, that I did listen to the special meeting of the Parks Board as well, and I think there was a little bit of confusion, no, this is just, I'm just getting out of my way, that they thought that there was gonna be, the conversation that I heard, they thought there were gonna be cuts made with either of these options to the Parks Board. And I went back to my budget, and I just wanna assure you with confidence, so you can go back to your board, I know you're the chair, and realize that we're putting 90 more thousand dollars into the Parks budget. We now have about 1,400,000 in that budget, you know, so you actually are getting an increase, and nothing is being cut. And so, I appreciate that, and I think what you were saying in this resolution is that you approve of the effective tax rate, which will provide for that as well. Okay? I see a hand.
Mayor, can I ask you?
Yes, sir, if you'll approach.
My name is John Harrison at 2911 Dry Hollow, and I'm on the board, but I was not at the special meeting. I could not make the special meeting. The week before that, we'd had a meeting though, and this was discussed. What I thought the board was trying to do is support the tax rate that was in the budget proposed by our very capable manager, city manager, that we hired and spent a lot of money to do, give us a budget, and that's what I thought we were having to, we were supporting in the resolution. I was not there, so I didn't read the resolution. I know what the resolution says, but we were supporting, I believe, what Mark and his staff proposed to you. Thank you.
Well, like I said, there seemed to be a little confusion, and Ashley Boyle straightened it out, that there really wasn't going to be any cuts to the Parks Board, and I think maybe that could've precipitated some of that conversation. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Seigerman, would you approach?
Mike Seigerman, I live at 4,000 Comanche Chase Drive, and I tend to agree with John. We have a city manager and a city staff and a finance department that's obviously been sterling what they've done, and the city manager's put his budget proposal together. I was at the council meeting two weeks ago when he offered these four alternatives, of which he did not endorse any of them and still recommended his budget. So, I would like to hear what the city manager has to say about the proposal that George has presented tonight. You know, I don't know where it came from, I don't know that George is a finance guy, but I'd like to hear what Mark has to say about that if we could.
It's up to you, Mr. McDaniel. I would think the only question here is, is it feasible, what was presented?
Yeah, I would just comment that, you know, this is our process, where I deliver a proposed budget to you all, I make my recommendations, whether it's to do something or not to do something. At this point, it's really in the council's hands. We presented a number of options. I think you know, you know, what I'm supporting, what I would suggest, but I'm also here to help you to try to get to where you want to go. So, it's in your, it's in the council's hands at this point.
All right. And if there's no more questions by council, I'm gonna...
Oh, there's lots more questions from council.
Since we have, have in the discussion, can I just ask that, looking at the proposal that I made, it does not have any, I mean, all the services that you proposed in your budget are still funded, are they not? They would still be, correct?
Right.
Well, except for KEDC.
Right.
Correct.
Correct. That's still part of the, but I mean, as far as services being provided, they're all still contemplated and covered, correct?
With the exception of the KEDC, correct, but I don't look at it just a year at a time. I'm gonna look for the long haul.
That's fine. Did you have a question, Ms. Summerlin?
I have quite a speech to make, Mayor.
Okay.
I think rolling back the tax rate is a very bad idea. In general, when a city is growing, tax revenues grow. That's the beauty of the property tax. That's how it's supposed to work. It's an optimistic sign that our town has increasing appraised values. It shows that we're humming along like a little sewing machine. We're not booming, but we're humming along. We're doing fine. There is no fiscal crisis on the horizon. There is no good reason to reduce the tax rate. Things are going well. We have comfortable reserves. We're functioning efficiently with sensible contingency funds, reserve funds, equipment replacement funds. The old line, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it," applies perfectly to our budget. Although, this talk of going back to the effective tax rate has been going on for some weeks, and the city manager has presented five options for accommodating this tax cut, none of those have been accepted by the three-person majority of this council. Instead, they want to adjust the budget by assuming that we'll collect more sales tax next year. Sales tax is growing, not altogether implausible, but I recommend that we handle that good news the way we did this year. We got halfway through the year, we found that our reserve fund was bigger than we thought it was gonna be, and so we moved money over to buy a new fire truck. That's the smart way to do it. Move the money when it's really in the bank, not when it's just a projection. And when we start talking about the future, I think it's only realistic, and I don't mean to challenge the assumptions on which the budget was billed, but just thinking, I'm a newly-retired person living on my investments now. Everybody expects a stock market correction. Everybody cautions you, the stock market is gonna drop. Lots of our citizens live on their investments. When that stock market drops, they quit buying things. The sales tax can be expected to go down. This is not a good time to be betting on a great big increase in the sales tax. This is not a good time to be betting on a great big increase in the sales tax. To me, this is, it's like you were a family, and you had a savings account, and you decided to blow the whole thing on a luxury cruise, when you know very well that the family van in the garage has got 175,000 miles on it. It's likely to need to be replaced. We are likely to need this money. We don't know what the Tri-Hello methane solution is going to cost us. We know that TCEQ is not going to let us get away without fixing it, whatever it costs. This is not the time to draw down the reserves and risk the future on a hope that we'll have a lot more money coming in. And all of that risk is for a bonus to the taxpayers of $22 a household, not even $2 a month. And that's the average valuation. The median valuation is lower. That means that over half the people in this town won't get $2,200. They'll get less than that. Is that worth it, to take a chance on our future, when things are going well? I just think it's silly and foolish. It's popular to cut taxes. I don't know if people made some campaign promises they're trying to realize, but it's just not good sense, in my judgment, and I will vote against it. I leave aside the whole question of the KEDC funding, because that will have another, we'll have another conversation about that. But the idea of reducing the city's contribution to the KEDC is another very bad idea in my mind. Thank you.
You're sure welcome. I guess I was the only one that didn't have comments last time since I was absent, so I'll just make mine, and then we'll move ahead to the vote, because all of you have probably things you'd rather do later. I do want to make one comment, that the sales tax increase was actually higher under Mr. McDaniel's projection than under Mr. Baruti, so...
Well, the, not the amount, right?
The amount was, yes, higher.
It's slight, but not the rate.
But it was higher.
No, the rate in the...
Yep. The amount of sales tax he recommended was 40, predicted 47,500, and Mr. Baruti's was 42,685, so it's slightly, slightly lower risk there. Having said that, I think that this is good. I want to say, I really believe that this is the most conversation since I've been attending council meetings for about 10 years that we've ever had about specifics in the budget. And of course, those of you who missed the workshops, we went into great detail there, and we had a lot of very good questions. Council had a very lot of good questions. And I appreciate you coming forward and having this kind of, this is what we're here for. It's your budget, it's your tax money, it's your homes, it's your dollars. So I know the county went through this yesterday, we were not able to attend because we had another meeting, but I know it was kind of a knock-down drag-out, and you decided, by golly, it was worth it for the taxpayers who are being hit right and left, to keep the tax rate where it was and not increase. So following that, UGRA, following the City of Ingram, who thought maybe small amounts, but at least it's some movement in the direction to help the taxpayer. In dollars and cents, it isn't that much. We also are going to be anticipating, just looking at, for instance, the sale of the City Hall property, there are some unexpected revenues and fund balances that we are going to have in the city going forward next year. So I don't see any danger flags there at all. I'm going to say three things, and then we're going to go to a roll call vote. The budget that Mr. Baruti proposed fulfills our pledge to the taxpayers to offer at least some property tax relief to the citizens. Number two, it does fulfill our council goals that we established at our retreat at the beginning of this year, to deliver quality municipal and public safety services in a cost-effective manner, which includes, by the way, public safety services, funding for streets, enhanced water quality, it is in the budget, and rehabilitation, much-needed rehabilitation of the wastewater plant, as well as offering increased funding for quality of life, capital projects, and general park maintenance. In particular, this proposed budget provides sufficient funding for patrol vehicles, pickup trucks, a dump truck, an ambulance, and a fire truck. Number three, it continues to provide funding for economic development by allowing for full funding of KEDC's fiscal year 2018 budget, and by providing funding for the comprehensive plan as well, which will provide not only this one, but future generations with invaluable guides for ongoing economic development and growth. That having been said, I will ask Ms. Craig for a roll call vote. I need a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to move that we accept the proposed budget with the amendments that I outlined here, which would, which would be a budget with, supported by the effective tax rate of .555, or 5514 per $100 of property tax value.
Mr. Hayes, is that a proper motion?
As long as you all know what you're voting on, and staff does as well.
Are you clear, Mr. McDaniel? Counsel?
Like, I don't have to say some specific thing about the tax rate.
So it's as presented, with your amendments and with Mr. McDaniel's amendments as well? Okay? There's a motion, is there a second?
Well, Mayor, excuse me.
Wait.
Because those are two different things, so it's really just what Mr. Baruti has outlined.
He just included yours, I'm sorry. Okay? Is there a second? I'll second the motion. All in favor, Ms. Craig, would you please read?
Mayor White?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Baruti?
Yes.
Councilmember Vocal?
Yes.
Councilmember Summerlin?
No.
Councilmember Ferguson?
No.
Okay. Ordinance number 2017-17 is proposed, passes 3-2. Item number 5B is ordinance number 2017-18 levying an ad lorum tax for the use and support of the municipal government for the city of Kerrville, Texas, for the fiscal year 2018, providing for apportioning each levy for specific purposes and providing, "When taxes shall become due and when same shall become delinquent if not paid." Ms. Yarborough, were you going to present? Mr. McDaniel said you were. This is the second reading of this ordinance.
Yes, this is the second reading. We've already had our public hearing, and we can go back through the proposed tax rate. Y'all have already proposed to do the effective tax rate.
Right, so in your packet, there's some language in there that would not be necessary if that's, if that's what the council is doing. So there was two motions, am I correct, Mike?
There were two motions on the, on the budget ordinance. There is, assuming you all vote to the effective tax rate, there'll be a motion, but it'll be a motion to adopt this ordinance with the new tax rate, with the effective tax rate, and if you'll read that out, the four-digit number, so that everyone knows what that is.
Okay.
And then we'll...
Okay, the effective tax rate is 55.14. Of that tax rate, the maintenance and operations part is 4779, and the interest in sinking is 0735, bringing the total to 5514.
All right, any questions for Ms. Yarborough? Any, let's see, I don't have...
You just got one, is it this topic?
No, that was for the next item.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Make sure, no. All right? If not, then no questions or comments by the public. And we had the one by Ms. Segerman, did you make up your mind, was that, okay, okay. All right, then with all of the questions proposed and comments, I will entertain a motion.
I would move to adopt the effective tax rate of 55.14 per $100 of property tax value to fully fund and support the budget just passed on the previous item.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is this a roll call vote, Ms. Craig?
Mayor White?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Baruti?
Yes.
Councilmember Vocal?
Yes.
Councilmember Summerlin?
No.
Councilmember Ferguson?
No.
All right, on second reading, motion, the effective tax rate is carried 3 to 2. Item number 6A is the purchase of four cardiac monitors from the Physio Control and the amount of $114,045.91. Chief Smith?
Mayor, counsel, this item is for the fire department to purchase four LifePak-15 cardiac monitors. These units will replace our current LifePak-12 monitors, whose service life, life will expire in January of 2019. The purchase will also complete a plan to upgrade from the current LifePak-12 to the new LifePak-15 model. If purchased before September 29, 2017, the vendor, Physio Control, will provide a 5% discount and allow a trade-in value of $3,000 for each of the current LifePak-12 models. This will bring our total discount on the purchase of the new units to $33,954.09. The total cost for the four units with the discount is $114,045.91. The funds are budgeted for and will be paid from the fiscal year 2018 budget. So staff recommends that council authorize the issuance of a purchase order for LifePak-15 cardiac monitors at a price not to exceed $114,045.91. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
And, and I did, I noticed that the list price was $160,000, and I'm assuming that it's because we're turning these in early. I can't figure out how we came to the $34,000. I can trust that that's the discount we get, and that's good, but is it, are we turning, you said these were good through '19, but we're just going to change them out early because we get a discount, we can upgrade?
The service life expires effective January of 2019.
Right.
We're purchasing the four now because of the discount. We're not sure we're going to get that.
Plus, there's a trade-in value.
Right. That's what I was wondering, it's the trade-in value that gets us up to that. But it's more than just the $3,000 each, because the numbers just don't work.
There's a 5% discount in there also.
There's a 5% discount if we get our order received by them by the 29th of the month.
Yes, yeah.
So that's a part of it, so we got to get them, send them the check overnight by Federal Express or something.
What, what numbers don't work?
5% discount, $3,000.
Yeah, the 5% of that, yeah. Okay, well, we'll take...
Pretty much lined it out for us.
Yeah, and we accept it in the budget, so we're going to go with it. We did have, and I covered it with Mr. McDaniel, if any council had questions, that we had one of them listed from Ms. Yarborough in this fiscal year and none in '18, but that's fine. If you need them, we have the capital budget to cover it, so...
We purchased one in fiscal year '17. They are in the fiscal year '18 budget, the proposed budget, which is now the approved budget. I think it's on page 39.
You gave me the page, Sandra, but we just didn't list it when we got our list, but that, you're right, you did send that to me today, so I'll add that to what we did.
And just to make sure I'm clear on your questions, there's a 5% discount and a $3,000 trade-in value if we purchase them before September 29 of 2017.
And, and will they still go in the 2018 budget, though?
They'll be paid from the fiscal year 2018 budget.
Okay. I move approval. No more questions then, I guess, by council, that's fine.
I have no questions.
All right, no more questions? We have a motion we second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries 5 to 0. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
6B is the fiscal year 2018 budget for the city of Kerrville, Texas Economic Improvement Corporation. Mr. Hoppe?
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. We did bring this item to the city council at its budget meeting on September 12. The EIC reconsidered the budget on September 18 and approved it as presented in your packet. Again, this budget does allocate $4,799,153 for fiscal year 2018. Revenue projections are $3,476,206. There is a contemplated drawdown of reserves of $1,307,947, ending with a unrestricted fund balance projected for fiscal year 2017 of $2.259,612. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. And I watched this also at the meeting, kind of back and forth, kind of an unusual thing. I know you all deliberated it at length. Are there any questions by council? If not, I have some speakers, Ms. Segerman, did you want to speak on this, too?
I have a question.
Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure. And Mr. Patillo?
Thank you, fellow citizens, city council, Madam Mayor. My name is Pat Patillo, I live at 1695 Mountain Laurel in the city of Kerrville, where I've been a resident, lived, worked, and worshiped here for the past 22 years, and I want to speak to the council tonight on behalf of asking you to approve the EIC budget as presented to you. You should each know from my letter to all of you of Sunday, the 24th, my position on this. George, I appreciate your response, you're the only one that's responded to me. The point I want to make, and to one point in your response, George, is to my allegation of micromanagement, there's a happy medium here. Nobody wants to be micromanaged, and nobody's asking for the council to rubber stamp anything. This budget was put together by extremely dedicated, hard-working, competent business professionals who want to help improve the economic opportunities in Kerrville, and I'm in favor of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Moser, Commissioner?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Subject is the KEDC reserve and how that's reflected in the EIC budget. And I think that there was a lot of discussion two weeks ago about reserve and how much it is, and why do you need a reserve? And I'd like to give you an example of, I was running an economic development department for the state in aerospace, and I had a reserve. I had a very small budget, I was the smallest department in the whole state of Texas, I believe. But I had a reserve, and the value of having that reserve is mid-year of one year. It occurred to me that Texas could be possibly the location of a commercial spaceport that had never been considered before, because on the horizon were reusable launch vehicles. Texas cannot launch expendable launch vehicles, because you drop them on people, and that's not good. Reusable launch vehicles can be launched from Texas. So because I had $90,000 in my budget, I was able to prove, without a doubt, that it would be safe to launch rockets from, from Texas. And with that, we established three spaceports, three spaceport authorities in the state of Texas. So fast forward 17 years today, there's SpaceX, everybody hears the SpaceX and Tesla. They're going to launch in South Texas one of those spaceports. That wouldn't have happened had I not had a reserve to be able to react to something that was happening at that time. And I think that's what Brian O'Connor was talking about the other day, is it's necessary for KEDC to have a reserve, to be able to react to things that are on the horizon, because you don't see these things until they're there. That's, that's critically important to have that flexibility. So I don't know how the EIC budget that you're getting ready to vote on reflects the KEDC budget in leaving a reserve in there for that type of operation. I hear "fully funded," but "fully funded" doesn't have some capability, flexibility, then, then I think that that's not, that's not a good idea. Another question, if I may, there was a lot of discussion about, right now, about the effective tax rate, and Mr. Baruti, I couldn't read what he was presenting up there, but it appeared to be, one of the things had to do with the library and county fees, is that correct? So the library's going to count on the county fees?
No, we took it out.
Took it out?
Right.
Okay, good.
That wasn't my proposal, that was, that was part of the house cleaning.
That, I couldn't, couldn't read it, but that's very good, okay?
We're assuming you're going to do what you said.
Because, okay, because that will unravel some other things. So I think that that's, that's the point I want to make, is, is you can't budget all the things that are coming forward in economic development and be able to react quickly. And one other point I'd like to make that was made two weeks ago, is I think it was referred to as the big three, Mooney International, James Avery, and Fox, and we don't need to do economic development for that. That is 100% incorrect. And the reason I say that is because KEDC worked behind the scene for probably a year in helping James Avery establish the location where they are. There were a lot of competing locations for that $15 million facility and 500 employees. So it's not a given. Economic development is important, and I think that, as the previous speaker said, that you've got a bunch of professionals at EIC. I think the KEDC board is one of the best ones that I've ever worked with, and you've got a bunch of professionals there. We're not going to waste money.
Thank you so much.
Can I say a real quick response to something? I'm not sure if it'll be, I like the way you guys do it at county commissioners, where if a person speaks, you actually have a little bit of a dialogue. And so a couple of things you pointed out. One, the big three, and rightly so, KEDC had a factor in that. During that time period as well, since 2012 at least, KEDC has also been paying down their reserve in their budgets in the last five years. So while they were obtaining those big feathers, they actually were doing what we're suggesting, which is just keeping the trend going, where they aren't actually contemplating a reserve. They've been buying it down for the last five years.
Yeah, there are a lot of factors in why that happened, and I think that was discussed two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments by council? I would like to just clarify something. I also listened to the EIC meeting. In my absence with my illness, I was able to watch that as well. And I just want to clarify, we've learned some things, again, through this process. First of all, to clear it up for council, if need be, and those of you who are out there who may not know, but we actually consulted our city attorney on this matter as far as procedure. And I think that's something that we're going to be getting into with the joint committee. So I don't want to get into a discussion about that this evening. That's not what we're here for. But Section 501, 054b, 2 of the Texas Local Government Code provides that the powers of a development corporation, such as the EIC, shall be subject at all times to the control of the city council. Section 501, 073 of the Texas Local Government Code provides that a city shall approve all programs and expenditures of its development corporation and shall annually review any financial statements of the corporation. Section 501, 401 of the Texas Local Government Code gives the city authority to alter the structure, the organization, the programs, or the activities of the development corporation at any time. This authority may be limited where there's an existing contract in place. And let me go there for clarity for just a brief moment, because I think it's important at this stage that we get it right. The existing contract that was referred to at the meeting, and that's on file as we speak, is the grant agreement between KEDC and the Kerrville EIC. Article 1a2 of this 380 grant agreement states that KEDC, subject to Sections 1c and 1d, is eligible to receive an amount up to $180,000 for each of the remaining two years of this agreement. And that started in October of 2015. So I think part of the argument that day, or maybe the misunderstanding, let's say, that day, is that there was a contract in place that requires the EIC to fund for three years for $180,000. But that, in effect, is not what the contract says. So with that having been said, it may clarify some of the arguments. One of the questions that we also ask our city attorney so that we can do it right is whether the city council has the authority to approve the EIC's budget with amendments to specific allocations and our expenditures. And his answer was, yes, we do. So that having been understood, I just wanted to make that clear, because it seemed to go back and forth quite a bit in that meeting. So the expenses, in summary, of the EIC must be approved by city council each year. With the approval of the EIC budget, with the amendment of the KEDC funding amount to $140,000, which is what was discussed at that meeting, and which, by the way, was suggested by the executive director, Brian O'Connor. With the approval of that, neither the city nor EIC would be making an appropriation obligating public funds without a designated purpose. And that's the key to this whole discussion, I think. It's not whether or not it will be funded, it will be. But the purpose for those designated funds, and remember, it's tax dollars. This is tax dollars that fund, at this juncture, the KEDC organization. So I think Commissioner Letts, and I would agree, Commissioner Moser, that it's important that the public be aware of the public purpose for which those tax dollars are being used. So we're talking a small amount, but that $40,000, as Mr. O'Connor mentioned, is undesignated in the KEDC budget. In other words, there's no particular expenditure tied to it. That having been said, with the approval of an amended budget, it would be clear that the KEDC budget for fiscal year '18 can be fully implemented as presented by Mr. O'Connor. The EIC would still remain operational. It would not shut down, as was rumored. So I hope this has been helpful in the conversation, and I look forward to the outcome of the discussions between EIC and KEDC, which hopefully will lead to clarity for all the entities and the public as to the roles of each entity. In my opinion, this is more about policy than certainly personality, and it is definitely, Mr. O'Connor, no reflection on anyone's abilities or performance. It is strictly policy. Ms. Patillo?
Mayor, may I just?
Hello, Sherri Patillo, 1695 Mountain Laurel. Serving on, currently serving on the EIC board. I just want to make a statement that there was clarification. There really didn't need to be any tonight, and we, as a board, when we approve this budget twice now, had the understanding that it would be funded up to $180,000, with $140,000 paid out now, and that they could return with a very specific request detailing how the additional $40,000 could be, would be used for our approval. So it wasn't just this open-ended, "We're going to do whatever you want for $180,000." It was, in fact, up to, as we do with other projects, we have an up to an amount on occasion. But always, there needs to be very specific details as to how, what the plans are for spending. And I just wanted to clarify that, because that's, we've discussed that in our meeting, so it wasn't as if we were just giving a blanket $180,000 in our approval twice now.
Yes, ma'am, I appreciate that. I think it was the $40,000 that was in question from Mr. Letts and me. And again, this is not, all of the expenditures that are regular maintenance and operation under this budget, even an amended budget, for the rent, for the salaries, for the car allowance, for the cell phones, all of that is provided for with an amended budget. All of it is provided for. The other things are not, that there would be a shutdown. Other things are marketing, web, you know, there can be, these are elective things that are in the budget, as you mentioned, that can go up and down with KEDC. But again, this proposal fully funds the operation that Mr. O'Connor requested, the budget that he requested. You had a question, Ms. Summerlin?
I just wanted to remind you, Mayor, that I've asked you before, when you're going to quote from documents that are not in our packet, would you provide everyone with a copy?
This was sent to all of us from Mr. Hayes, was it not, these excerpts from the Texas Local Government Code?
I mean, I assume that you're reading from an email that I sent you. I mean, I don't...
Yes. This is straight out of the Texas Local Government Code.
But not the policy one, not the contract thing.
Oh, the contract is on file, the KEDC contract.
Sure it is, but that doesn't do me any good tonight. I'm just saying. I just appreciate that in future.
Okay, I quoted exactly where it is, Article 1a2.
Right.
That's exactly what it says, but...
I'd like to have it in front of me, if we're going to make it a basis of discussion.
We'll do that. Going forward, we'll sure do it, but that is, trust me, what it says. So that having been said, any more questions? I don't have any other citizen request forms here, so I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt the proposed EIC budget with one single amendment, which is that one-line item about KEDC annual contribution, change it from $180,000 down to $140,000.
Okay, have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, please raise your...
No, I have discussion.
Well, okay, we follow this. We have discussion before, then we have a motion and vote, but go right ahead.
Thank you. After some original conversation about eliminating the KEDC, which is on the tape of an EIC meeting, the majority of our council has backed down to just cutting the EIC budget allocation for KEDC and also the city's contribution to KEDC by $21,000. Where is this going is not an unreasonable question, and it's my question. Is this a gradual defunding of KEDC? Does this mean that we don't expect KEDC to ever have any reserves to work with? We're just going to spend down all their reserves and then keep them on that short a leash forever? The idea of having an independent, board-managed organization like KEDF includes, at least, the expansion of stakeholders in the process. It's the combined wisdom of businesspeople who've been successful in our community. That's an advantage that seems obvious to me and would always be a reason to keep the KEDC and to keep it strong with a strong budget and strong reserves. I'm glad the mayor said this is nothing personal. I'd like to say I have heard nothing but praise for the KEDC as it is currently configured. It is working well. The board works well together. They are nimble, as was shown by when they lost their executive and quickly found another. To undermine them seems to me to send the wrong message in the community and outside the community. Besides the advantage of incorporating many good brains on the challenge of economic development, having a KEDC is the preferred method of new businesses. They would rather talk to an independent group than the governments. It's good to start that way, and then gradually, when the deal is finalized, the negotiations are finished, the vetting's been done, the elected officials still approve or disapprove. Besides these factors, we have in the KEDC an organization that unites the big players in our community, the school district, the city, and the county. The city and the county are working well together this budget cycle. Isn't that wonderful? Do we want, as a city now, we voted to back out of the city's contribution, are we going to cut the EICs, too? Finally, the optics are just bad. Instead of looking like a business-friendly community that's got its ducks in a row, we look like a fractured community, infighting like a bucket of crabs trying to climb to the top, not who we really are, I hope. Now, who we want to be as a community raises another troubling aspect of this move. If we do not pass the EIC budget that they have recommended to us not once, but twice, are we saying that the council's going to make these decisions and ignore the advice of their own appointees? I think that would be a very bad decision. Another of the strengths of the current configuration is that we have a board of the EIC made of good citizens, people with experience in business, who know this town, who know and learn something about economic development by being, by serving. They're a little insulated from the political fray. Both these characteristics help them to establish and to negotiate the good deals for the city. Now, it's no mystery in this town, it's no secret, that the majority of the current council have been opposed to some of the decisions the EIC has made in the past, particularly the reuse pond, the transmission lines, but also the sports complex, the river trail, if memory serves. Immediately after the election, they replaced three members of the EIC with George Barudy and two others who think like them. I opposed that rejection of good citizens who had served us well and who had more terms to serve, but elections have consequences. There you are. What troubles me now is that this majority of the council does not seem to be willing to exert its influence and even its power in that normal way by appointing the members of the EIC. They still don't have a majority on the EIC. So now, without accusing anybody of any intentions, I just point out that we have a proposal that will virtually move the power decisions, like the budget, to the city council, where those three do have a majority. George has described this as appropriate oversight. I wonder if the 1,412 people who voted for Mr. Barudy in May and the 1,149 who voted for Mr. Vogel were intending them and the mayor to make every decision in the future of Kerrville? Maybe that's what they meant, but I don't think so. I don't even think they represent the majority of Kerrville's voters. However that may be, I would just like to recommend to them that they wait till May of next year. Three of us are up for election. I hope all of you will remember, if you like this way of decision-making, concentrating power in the hands of a few, then you need to change out these two positions. On the other hand, if you like a more inclusive situation, where a lot of experienced people in this community help make the decisions, then I think you need to consider the mayor's position. And that's my speech for tonight. Thank you.
All right. No, we're through with our discussion this evening. We refer to the Texas Local Government Code, which we didn't write, and I read it to you straight out of the book. We are not defunding, just so that it doesn't get misunderstood, we are not defunding, we're fully funding KEDC's requested budget. We are changing nothing in the rest of the EIC budget to reflect any other changes. I will tell you my last concern for the $40,000, which is the same as Mr. Letts' undesignated expenses, simply that when these decisions are made for expenditures, when we do it in council, we do it in EIC, it's subject to open meetings. The KEDC is not. That's simply all. We are just being a watchperson over taxpayer dollars, public funds. And if there is a proposal that Mr. O'Connor and KEDC board recommends immediately, the city, through which 380 agreements have to go, and the county, through which 3818 agreements have to go, and EIC, if there's a request for 4B tax dollars, are open to the proposal into executive session. So I don't see anything that hinders anything going forward at this point. We've had our discussion. We have a motion and a second on the floor.
Mayor, I just have to say, one last time, though, you can't take $21,000 out of the city's contribution and cut what the EIC is going to contribute to $140,000 now and $40,000 if it is approved later without changing the budget. Changing revenue does change the budget of the KEDC.
With the reserves...
They will now be drawing down reserves they've accumulated over the years, and they won't have those reserves.
Yes, that's correct. All right. That having been clear, there's a motion and a second on the floor? All in, are you clear with a motion, Ms. Gray?
Yes.
It's been a while. Okay. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries reach two. Item number 6C is Resolution Number 38-2017, amending the City of Kerrville fee schedule by revising fees charged for various services. And we'll wait until everybody leaves, so we can hear.
I'm willing, go ahead, make a motion.
Ms. Yarborough? We'll wait and see if there's any questions about any of it. This is Resolution Number 38-2017, amending the City of Kerrville fee schedule by revising fees charged for various services and uses provided or offered by the city. These were all brought to council, and they've been in our public hearings. No... No changes, I presume, Ms. Yarborough.
No, I've highlighted them. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those about the changes.
I have just one, because I didn't actually notice it until this packet. The one municipal use for the reuse water, that was in our, it's page 95 of the agenda, but I don't know where it is on the fee schedule, sorry.
It's under irrigation.
Page what?
Page 95 of the agenda packet, I think.
Might go up to 17.
It's 21.
Page 21. Yeah, page 21, yes. There you go.
Yes.
I would have to go back and look at the original one that was in your budget document, but it's been there for quite some time.
Yeah, what's your question?
The only reason I ask about it is because I thought, when I'd been looking at the reuse water with Mr. McDaniel, it appeared that the, both the expense at the sports complex and the golf course, Shiner Golf Course, was going at 65 cents a thousand, and this is stating, I assume, that it's going to go to 38 cents? Is that right?
Yeah, this happened before I came on board, but I believe there was direction from the prior council to go ahead and adopt the municipal rate of the 38 cents or whatever it is.
Okay, well, that's good enough. That's all I was really asking.
Yeah, we don't have a contract of that effect, but we just put it in the fee schedule. And I know, again, the solid waste went up a little bit, but that was because of the contract, so.
Right.
Any other questions by council? Don't have any speakers on this particular item, so I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 38-2017. Did you, okay. Put a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. Item number 6D, Resolution Number 39-2017, Nominating Candidate to the Kerr Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. And we have council, some applications in your packet. I called all of the applicants, and I don't know if there's any questions about any of these. Brenda, would you please give us an overview?
Yes, ma'am. The Kerr Central Appraisal District has requested nominations from the city for the board, for the KCAD Board of Directors for the 2018-2019 term. The deadline for taxing entities to submit nominees is October 15th. KCAD will then prepare a ballot for the entities to cast their votes. Based on the city's tax levy, the city will have 704 votes out of a total of 5,000 votes. An item will be scheduled on the November 14th agenda for the city council to cast those votes. William Morgan is currently serving as the city's representative on KCAD, and I have a total of six applications on file from persons who meet the eligibility requirements as stated in KCAD's letter dated August 30th. There is no interview team for this board, and I recommend approval of Resolution Number 39-2017, Making Nominations to KCAD Board of Directors. And I'm ready to answer any questions. I just need the name or names to fill in on that resolution.
Okay. And council, you can nominate, we can nominate one or five or however that works. So I have called, as I mentioned, each of these candidates. Is there any of the candidates here tonight that wish to speak?
Mr. Norat didn't make it back.
Yes, he did.
Did he?
Yeah, there he is. If you have any questions for him, let me just run through these names real quick. Brian B. Cade Cody, and he's been here 10 years. He's self-employed with the insurance business. He has his business administration degree. He's served on Kerrville Board, Chamber of Commerce, James A. V. Goff Classic, Board of Directors for Comanche Trace at one time, golf committee. He saw it in the paper. I'm doing this quickly. He didn't list any other fraternal or civic organizations or nonprofits that he's affiliated with, and he's out of town in New Jersey. Barbara Cox works for Don Dorsey. She is a paralegal. She's been here three years. She has her Master's of Business Administration from the University of Houston. She's worked with Habitat for Humanity, lay representative First United Methodist Church, Annual Conference, EMEA's Cairo's Prison Ministry in Hondo. She has never been a member of a board or commission. She has assisted in Habitat Home Building, worked with children and youth at Vacation Bible School, helped distribute food, helped raise money for Children's Ark, worked with Boy Scouts of America, key member of the troop, and $6 million for the Houston church, First United Methodist Church there. She saw the ad in the paper. Judy Eichner has been 28 years a resident. She is a Realtor with Centura 21, The Hills. She has her bachelor's degree from Nebraska. She's worked with Habitat for Humanity and the Deert Center. In fact, that's where she is this evening. Kerrville ZBA for three years, taught NKISD, full-time Realtor in the community, worked on Habitat Board, Deert Center, Kerrville Board of Realtors, and Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, Rotary Noon Club, Director of Committees. Jim Level, who is with us this year, has been here 17 years. He is employed by Hill Country Visitor, four years TCU, Texas Tech Rotary Member, I don't know how long, interested in Chamber of Commerce and Rotary. This is the new forms, so it's a little different than the past one. Been a member of Chamber of Commerce from 2002 to 2017, 45 years' experience in sales, marketing, and management. Bill Morgan currently serves, he's a pharmacist, pharmacist relief service. He's been on P&amp;Z, ZBA, in the hospital board, Bee County Hospital Board, Elks Lodge, Bee County Housing Authority, Robertson J.C.'s. And Dr. Richard Norat, who's with us this evening, was with Federal Aviation Administration. He was aviation safety inspector, head of a labor union arbitrations, has his Juris doctoral St. Thomas University Law School, volunteer with the Coast Guard, and he can fill in some of these blanks. He has been to airport board meetings. He's a friend of Dr. Mosher and Bruce McKenzie. Interested in the ordinances, state and local, and that's it. We've never done this before, but I just wanted people to know who we're looking at and surely say that we appreciate it. All, are there any questions by council for those that are here or about these applications?
I just have one, just a confirmation. So Mrs. Eichner is currently on the zoning board?
Yes, and I spoke to her. She would be willing to resign that, to go on this board.
Is that a prerequisite? Like, does that a?
It's been our policy.
Okay.
We just appoint one person. I have a question. Has Mr. Morgan been able to attend the meetings faithfully?
Yes, well, faithfully, I don't know, but he was in the budget discussions. And truthfully, if there were, he'd mentioned to me, if there's somebody else that would rather do it, he'd be happy to let that happen. He filled out the term of Justin McDonald.
Right.
So, yeah. Anybody want to say anything or ask any questions? If not, then I will entertain a nomination.
I nominate Judy Eichner.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion? Okay. I just want to say before we take the vote that I really appreciate everyone, and I told them on the phone today.
Well, yeah, I think we got good candidates.
Yes, we had excellent candidates, and I make sure that all of them knew that if they weren't appointed to this board, we have others. And so we appreciate their willingness, and Diane, yours to serve, too, Mike, and those that are here that serve. So we have a motion and a second for Judy Eichner. All in favor, would you please raise your hand? Motion carries five to zero. So she will be our nominee.
Somebody clarify that for me, because I get confused by this. So by nominating her, do we have enough votes in the city so we've kind of guaranteed her being there? Is that the way that works?
Probably, if we don't split them up.
There's 5,000 votes, and all the taxing entities get to vote based on the amount of their tax levy. We have 700 votes. The five candidates, the five nominees that get the most votes are the ones that serve. So you wouldn't want to split your votes, 200 for, you know, various people, but if...
And we're one of the top five vote holders, right?
With our votes, we should be able to get one on.
Okay.
And you could, we could nominate another if anybody was interested in.
You can nominate up to five. Every taxing entity can nominate.
But if I understood that right, if we nominate another, that reduces the likelihood...
You're exactly right.
Only when you go to do your voting, the voting comes up in November.
We quit and move to the next item.
Well, we've already done that. Okay, just given the opportunity so everybody understands. And again, we appreciate everyone who has done that, so. All right, moving ahead to item number 6F, the Amendment to procedural rules for meetings.
Wait.
6E.
Or did it?
6E.
Sorry about that. My finger got ahead of me here. All right. Resolution Number 40-2017, Authorizing the Waiver of Various Fees and Authorizing License Agreement for the Use of the City's Downtown Pavilion for the Kerrville Farmers Market to be held at downtown Kerrville the first Friday evening of each month. And Mr. McDaniel, you wanted to present this?
Yes, Mayor, I'll open, then I'll turn it over to Mr. Hoppy to present. But while he's going to the podium, I just want to give a shout out to Councilman Vogel for bringing this to our attention, and he and I have been working on this one for weeks now. And so we view this as a great addition to the downtown in terms of program and activities, a quality event. We do have some representatives in the audience if y'all have some questions once Mr. Hoppy's completed with his presentation.
Okay.
I'll just briefly introduce what's before you tonight, mayor and council. You do have a resolution, essentially two parts, one that authorizes the waiver of the fees, and then the secondary part that issues a license agreement for the use of the downtown pavilion. I believe there's a slide that illustrates, if I can pull that up here. Essentially, the city would be a co-sponsor for this event. The resolution before you waives the associated fees that have been outlined in your exhibit. There's also outlines the use of existing tents, tables, and chairs that are owned by the city, provides some in-kind marketing services, a small degree of financial support for downtown lamppost banners, as well as barricades, electricity, and of course, the use of downtown restaurants. There we go. That provides you a little bit of an aerial shot there for what is being contemplated by the Kerrville Farmers Market. This, I do want to highlight, this does not waive any associated fees if police officers are required. I don't believe it will be required, but if the event evolved in that manner, it does not waive those fees at this time. We would have to come back to council for that. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do we have any other events that are normally scheduled on the first Friday of each month?
No, sir. I know this group has been working very closely with Parks and Recreation Director Ashley Boyle, and we're not aware of any conflicts at this time in that location. Again, that is essentially a private parking lot. The only area that the city's really, you know, has purview over is the downtown pavilion area.
Okay. And as part of that, we also have, I mean, just as what you've gone through to get this done, the businesses around there have all, I don't know if all of them have, but most of them have given sort of a thumbs up to this being in this area, correct?
That's my understanding, is that the event sponsors have reached out to other downtown business entities and garnered support for the event.
And you got use of a parking lot that I guess is somewhat of a contentious parking lot as well, right?
It is a private parking lot. They have, my understanding is they've garnered support in use of the parking lot from the owner, which is the building there at the top of your screen. Yes, sir.
Okay.
The Bank of America building. That's correct.
All right.
Yes, Ms. Seigerman?
Is it by chance the same farmers market that's at the pavilion? Is it a different group?
The question is, is it the same farmers market?
There will be some of the same vendors. This is going to be a different market. This will be Kerrville's, that's Kerr County, Kerr County Farmers Market. This is Kerrville's Farmers Market.
So I'd like to know more about that, that we can use for us, how vendor could get mentioned.
Okay. Sure.
Okay. Sorry, ma'am.
Did you say we have an applicant in here?
We have some of the folks that we've been working with, and y'all want to just come forward briefly and just make a few comments about what you plan to do and the scope?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's a pleasure to sit in the chamber tonight. My name is Justin Graham. I'm my wife Catherine. We are actually, a portion to your question of being the Kerr County Farmers Market, and this was something that came about through some investigations for a more centralized location for the farmers market and to bring those agriculture producers into the town as a form of enrichment. So we wanted to, in cooperation with the city, is develop a market that was specifically named to Kerrville, the city of Kerrville, and the downtown opportunity. So we're delighted to work with you on that and to present that to the community. We are very thankful and humbled by the efforts that we've received. And as far as to answer your question, we are working with several other community members, members of the community, to establish branding, the logo, and a new website that would allow for future vendors to go through the process of gaining access. Yes, ma'am. And so we've had a great relationship so far with the city and Mrs. Ashley and Daryl, Mr. Poe. So we have, we're very excited, very excited. Thank you.
So excited for you. I think there was something that was mentioned, not just the baked goods and flowers and plants and gifts, but there were other things. My question was why on a Friday evening? One, I know is the traffic, but there were other things that may be there as well?
Yes, ma'am. So we didn't want to interfere perhaps with some of the other markets in town, and there's one in Ingram, and then as well, there's the one that is the Kerr County that is on Wednesdays. So as just a trial run for this remainder of this year, we proposed a Friday evening once a month to iron out any kinks. Now, the idea is that we may reappear and request that it become a weekly market, perhaps on a different day. Many of the vendors who will be participating also, as we do, participate in Kendall County, Bear County, they participate in Gillespie County at other markets. So these are, these are particular producers that do make other markets on other days. And so that's another thing that we are open to adopting changes in the future as far as the best time. The first Friday was just our initial launch to kind of liven up that area.
Do you expect, how much longer will the season last? When will it get too cold that you don't have anything to sell?
Well, ma'am, a lot of the producers are meat producers, so they're regenerative ag, so there's pork, there's beef, and this is grass-fed and grass-finished types of producers. I would say that we do live in a climate where there is some potential winter production on vegetables and things of that nature, but, and there are in this, in this area of Texas, in Kerr County, there's some producers who are, well, Mikey's Garden is one of them, that they have a greenhouse, and they're a year-round, 100% organic producer. So they provide these things, and they're also looking to be a...
Very good. And it says in here, if we approve this, then you'll begin in October. We can assume the first...
Yes, ma'am. October the 6th. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay. Any questions or comments? Good work, Mr. Vogel.
Good work.
And we thank you, Mr. Graham.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Any questions by, I don't have any forms? All right. If there's no further conversation, I will ask for approval of Resolution Number 40-2017 as read.
I move that we pass Resolution 40-2017 as read.
Second.
And motion is second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. We look forward to that, and Bruce, that'll help your downtown. And item, now can I go to 6F?
No.
Okay. Amendments to procedural rules for meetings for the Kerrville City Council. This was put on the agenda by Councilman Vogel.
Yes, Mayor. I would like to amend Rule 7.5 to allow city council members to attend any city board meetings, provided adequate notice is provided to staff, that an agenda can be made if posted required. I've been invited to a few board meetings, and I've been wanting to attend some, just to gain some knowledge, and was, this was brought to my attention that we're not allowed to do that. So I would like to make an amendment to Rule 7.5C, so it will allow us to attend.
Okay.
Are these meetings you want to attend not taped?
They may be, but if it's time, I would like to be able to be there present.
I have...
And these are all, I've been invited to two now that I couldn't go to, and I would have really liked to have gone to those two.
I had just one. I had just one observation about that, because I was certainly in on the original discussion about this. And I could understand some of the reasoning, you know, why, you know, we need to be careful as council members. I don't know that I think, I agree with the argument that we intimidate, but we might look at, if, if we consider this, we might look at some language in there to add, say, to attend any city board meetings, provided the council member does not participate in the deliberation unless addressed or questioned by the board or commission. The reason I would say that is because that way, and I think I was in error once myself at one of the planning and zoning meetings, that I made some comments that probably I shouldn't have. I mean, it was pertinent to what they were discussing, but it was better that they discuss it, decide it, and then, you know, I could have my comment later. And so I think it is important that, that these boards have their liberty, you know, to be able to deliberate. I don't think they're intimidated, but I'd like to go to the library board meeting sometime and sort of observe. Sometimes there's presentations you...
I agree, but I, I would make the suggestion that maybe we table this till the next council meeting and let somebody work on the words to be sure that we get the words that are, that ought, that we've all said ought to be there, rather than just not have the words that we're literally approving. I don't, I don't disagree. I've wanted to go to some myself, but I think we ought to have the words real, really clear, because this is, certainly can be a touchy subject, and I'd rather it not be.
Could I ask you this, Councilman? The, the language that I suggested, provided the council member...
Well, wait a minute. What, you said...
And, and Mike could make the wording to where, you know, we could all approve of it, but in just, that the council member, provided the council member does not participate in the deliberation or discussion unless questioned or addressed by the board or commission members.
See, I think that's a loophole that we don't want to leave.
Yeah, that's a loophole. That's a loophole.
If you're there, you're strictly watching. You're not participating.
And we can do that.
You're not even answering questions.
That's a good recommendation.
Just should not participate.
No participation.
Does that, does that work for you?
That works for me.
All right. I'll take your suggestion.
With one caveat, I would hope, which is already in C, which says if you have, if it's a...
Yes, exactly.
Unless you're there as a, as a petitioner or something.
Yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah. They'll leave that last sentence or phrase, for sure.
Mr. Hayes, would you remind me what you said when we, when we made this rule last year? It was so that we would not unduly influence the board or interfere with due process?
I, I think, and I think I use this example, so in case, and I don't, I'm not suggesting the mayor did this when, and I wasn't there when she attended the P&amp;Z meeting, but sometimes, you know, I've seen it happen in a community where a member of council attends a P&amp;Z meeting when they're considering an ordinance and participates in, in the adoption or the advocacy for that ordinance, and then it goes up to council, and then they have kind of another bite at the apple. And so I'm always kind of cognizant of due process and making sure...
And the comments, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think that would take care of it. Mr. Seigerman, you were, you were probably there at that meeting, and y'all were contemplating a letter to send to council, and I made a recommendation, and later I thought, I shouldn't have done that. This is your deal. This is your letter. So, you know, I agree with Summerlin and Ferguson that, that's fine if we go and we don't participate at all, even if questioned. I think that would work, and we're not advocating, so...
And if you do that, then, then I don't know what's the advantage of not just watching the tape? And you don't have to make any changes.
I'll give you, I'll give you an example of that. There was a P&amp;Z meeting about three months ago that actually did pertain to something that I would, that had something to do with me. And I don't know if I was pointing and clicking to the wrong spot, but it seemed like it was a month before it got on there. And I really wanted to see it prior, because I thought it was going to be something that was coming to council, and so I wasn't able to. So if there's no harm in sitting there silently, it seems like that would be okay.
They did it for years. I don't think there was any, you know, adverse outcome of anything before, so can we agree on that, on these changes? Is that all right with you, Mr. Vocal? If you...
Yes.
Okay, if you want to do it? If you want to make a motion, unless there's any more questions or discussion?
I move to amend rule 7.5C with the additions we discussed of the no participation unless, unless there's personal business.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, would you raise your hand? And all opposed? Motion carries four to one. All right. Ms. Yarborough, 7A is a budget and economic update.
Who has the clicker?
I think George still has it.
No, I passed it down that way.
I'm sorry. It's running.
Mayor was keeping it.
Thank you. This is the budget and economic update as of August 31st. In the general fund for the month of August, the monthly revenue was $1,385,799, with our year-to-date revenue of being $27,742,466. Our expenditures for the month was $2,246,117, with our year-to-date of being $24,962,627. In the water-sure fund, our revenue for the month was $1,198,315, with our year-to-date of being $10,741,37. Our expenditures for the month of August was $845,738, with our year-to-date of being The hotel-motel fund had revenue of $137,079, with our year-to-date of being $1,133,962. Our expenditures for the month was $231,250, and our year-to-date was $1,012,700. In the hotel-motel fund, that was the quarterly payment that we normally make to CVB, so it's a large one that you normally don't see. You'll also notice that our property tax has came in very well this year, and also our sales tax. On the next one, on our community investment plan, there is the listing of the current projects, the most current projects going on with our project budget, the activity during the month of August, our project-to-date expense, and our remaining project balances. At the bottom of the page, in the development activities, permits issued in the development office, we had eight residential permits issued in the month of August, and permits for commercial new and improvements was $1,162,000. Our housing inventory is staying constant, and our unemployment, and our unemployment is staying constant, and our utilities accounts are growing about a half a percent.
Ms. Yarborough, you had 95.78% of budget on sales tax collections, but I know we're doing really well. This is, we have one more month.
Yes, ma'am.
We predict it'll be...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Plus, you'll have 60 days of accrual.
Yes, we will.
Okay.
Yeah, but, and also, I think what she's asking about is, we're 95% of the annual budget, 91% of the time passed, right?
Exactly.
So we're, we're 4%, 5% ahead, right?
Yes, we're in.
All right, any other questions from Ms. Yarborough? If not, items number eight is item, thank you, Sandra. Hearing none, we don't have any other executive session, so at this point, at 7:59, we shall adjourn.